Good evening. This is the October 3 meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag?
Counselors, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Guanasso?
Here.
Here. Counselor Haas?
Here.
Here. Counselor Keith?
Here.
Here. Counselor McKenna is absent. Counselor Morabito is absent. Counselor Nowoselski is absent. Counselor Patch?
Here.
Here. Counselor Powers?
Here.
Here. Counselor Rotundo?
Here.
Here. And Council President Genino?
Here.
Here. A quorum is present. Calendar item number one, the joint meeting of Comcast, National, and Verizon has been rescheduled. A later date will be decided. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to inform the people of Ward 6 that I got an email today from Joe Gravolisi of the mayor's office. The subject was tomorrow's community forum. They postponed it. All encouraged to attend community forum at 10:11 at the American Legion on October 11th. It said tomorrow's Ward 6 community forum scheduled for 6:00 to 8:00 at the Whalen School, unfortunately had to be postponed. We will notify residents when this has been rescheduled. I guess they're either going to reschedule it. They left it very confusing. They're either going to reschedule it or they want you to go to the Ward 4 meeting that was rescheduled for October 11, 6:00 to 8:00 at the American Legion. Just, I want to apologize to the people on the late notice of this postponement. I know there was people, I got a couple of phone calls today, so the word must have got out to some people. But I hope the mayor's going to have somebody standing down there at 6 o'clock at the Whalen School for the people who are going to show up tomorrow after this late cancellation to inform them that it's been canceled. And again, I apologize for the inconvenience. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Patch. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend rules. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. We'll take up the late motion by Counselor Rotundo.
Late motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor explain why $1.8 million in free cash has not been certified with the DOR.
Counselor President, through you to Treasurer Anzoni.
Thank you, Mr. Anzoni.
Hello? Yes. Yes, Counselor.
So, I'm not entirely sure that it's $1.8 million, but my concern is why haven't we filed for our free cash? I know in the past, we've done it at a later date sometimes, as you had pointed out in March, but looking at the Treasury receipts and the budget and the remaining money that's in the revolving accounts and other accounts, I mean, it's between $1 and $1.8 million as far as I can see at this point, and I'm just wondering what happened.
Well, the free cash has been certi-- we're waiting for the free cash certification of July, excuse me, June 30, 2015, and then we have to get the free cash certified for June 30, 2016. So there's a year wait there. It's in the process of being sort of worked on now by the city auditor and the financial team to have it certified for June 30, 2015, and the amount is not known yet. There's a schedule, a formula, in which has to be submitted to the Department of Revenue, and then once that formula is submitted and the number is put into the formula, it then is reviewed by the Department of Revenue, and it's in a back-and-forth situation where they look at our balance sheet to make certain the numbers match. So it takes some time, and we have had it certified as the latest March of the following year. Now, the amount, the amount is something that we can't eyeball. I would say the June 15, if I were to take a guess, my estimate to the financial markets for June 30, 15, which has been publicized, is somewhere in the area of $1.5 million, but that's the guess. I've been off. I've always been low, because I always estimate, and I'm very conservative in my estimates, especially to the financial markets, and it's proven wise because of our, because they tend to trust people who are conservative in their estimates. The estimates have been low. I said at one time, I said a million dollars, and it was $3.2 million in the past. So I would safely say that in June 15, 2000, June 30, 2015, I'd say $1.5. As of June 30, 2016, the books just got closed, or are in the process of being closed at that point, and my guess would be somewhere in the area maybe of a million dollars. So with that, we're looking at working on the June 30, 2015, and then working on the June 30 with everything else that's going on with June 30, 2016. We have a healthy free stabilization fund. A lot of the times, we have the free cash go into the stabilization fund, and we right now have a very healthy stabilization account, somewhere in the area of four to five million dollars, and that's very beneficial to the city. One of the things that helps that is the good, great collections of taxes and the, and I'm not just saying that to pat myself on the back, honestly, but it is one of the major things. You'll see that in the auditor's report. But the other part of it is the sale of real estate, and if tomorrow we are having an auction, and it's a chance to plug the auction of sale of city-owned land, and that actually goes right to the bottom line, it goes right into the free cash calculation. So those things are very important, and we are doing those things and making certain that we turn over the foreclosed property as immediately as we can. So with a healthy stabilization fund, with a strong free cash figure, I believe the city's doing very well at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
Okay.
Any other counselors have any other questions? Counselor Patch?
Hello? You say the stabilization fund is between four and five million?
Between four and five million. I actually haven't looked at it recently to take the number down, but I do look at it when I, for a number of reasons, usually when I report to the financial institutions or when there's a need for further funding and the appropriations, since I haven't had to look at it recently. By memory, if I'm not mistaken, it's between four or five million dollars. Correct?
I thought the administration was left with a stabilization fund of over five billion dollars.
About five million dollars, yeah.
Over five?
Yeah, about five million dollars.
Okay.
And that will grow. Again, we had a healthy land sale last year that brought in $970,000, and again, good strong tax collections under expenditure appropriations, and that helps along the way, good strong budgeting procedures. So that's what helps the free cash. But there is a formula to go by, and then also the revenue that comes in as far as from the state and the federal government, as long as it's done in a timely fashion.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Mr. Anzoni. Thank you, Counselor Patch. Counselor Rotundo, is it your will to send this to Ways and Means, or would you wish to vote on this this evening?
Sure. Madam Clerk? On the late motion by Counselor Rotundo, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna is absent. Counselor Morabito is absent. Counselor Nowoselski is absent. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Genino?
Yes.
Yes. The motion is ordered.
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you, Mr. Anzoni, for attending tonight and answering our questions. At this time, we'll return to the regular order of business. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number two, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo relative to adopting a pedestrian and transit-oriented development overlay district from Route 1A north to Route 60 east.
Counselor Rotundo.
Madam President, I understand I have five motions before the council. I'd like to delegate which ones I'd like to take up instead of randomly going through them unless that's what you wish to do.
Good.
Very well. Basically, I'd like to forward this to the mayor. I think having both pedestrian and transit-oriented overlay development district would be helpful in both securing funding, but as well as assisting with bringing development to the city. Thank you.
Any other counselors that wish to speak on this? We can send this to Zoning.
Calendar item number three, motion of Counselor Rotundo requesting the police and fire chiefs to appear before the city council to discuss ways to lessen overdoses in Dunkin' Donuts.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Madam President. In, to a lesser degree, I believe Beauchamp doesn't have this problem as much as other parts of the city, but we have to do something about people utilizing public bathrooms in not only Dunkin' Donuts but other places, and unfortunately, doing drugs, in particular heroin. We need to think of ways of harm reduction to prevent this, because unfortunately, if they are in a bathroom alone, the likelihood of mortality is very high, because the ability to resuscitate is difficult. So if we could speak to both the chief of police and the fire chief and come up with an idea, that would be great. Within this particular conversation, I'd also like to ask about the money that was part of the tourism grant set aside by Representative DeLeo, or Speaker DeLeo, and see if we have any of that money for cameras, not particularly in private businesses, but to use them within city parks, as it's been brought to my attention that needles have been found in various parks throughout the city, and this will only help notify the police when people are congregating and to set forth directed patrols. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. And I appreciate my colleague's sentiment, but I'm not sure what he's asking. Do we let two people go in the bathroom so one shoots up, the other one can call 911 if they have an overdose? I'm not exactly sure what the, what the motion is asking for, so...
Counselor Rotundo?
No, actually, to the contrary. I'd like to actually have a system where they're not allowed to go in, and a key system is set up, like they use in other parts of the state. In Boston, they do have harm reduction, where they actually have someone sit in with someone who's shooting up. It decreases emergency room visits, to your dislike, I clearly understand, but no, this isn't what that is at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Rotundo, is it your will of this motion to go to committee? Would you like to vote on it this evening?
Committee's fine.
Sure. We'll send this to Public Safety.
Calendar item number four, motion of Counselor Rotundo requesting the director of Revere TV to appear before the city council to discuss operational guidelines, licensing, and the operating rules and regulations of its company as required by federal law.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Madam President, and also, as by the franchising authority, as has been reported in the Journal and has been brought to my attention, there's been some issues, and I'd like to discuss them. Thank you.
Any other counselors that wish to speak on this? On Counselor Rotundo's motion? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number five is the report of the Ways and Means Subcommittee.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Subcommittee met earlier this evening to discuss four motion, four items that were motions of Counselor Rotundo. The first was 16-210, motion of Counselor Rotundo investigating the feasibility of installing solar panels on all municipal buildings, and I think the committee agreed that that would be passed with the caveat of making sure that these roofs would support safely, because as you know, there are many roofs still around the city as a result of the hurricane that for some reason were not, particularly the building we're sitting in right now. So for some reason, they were not fixed when we, if and when we got that hurricane money. I don't know if we got it even, but if we did, I would have thought, like this building and the other building that comes to mind is the youth center down on 150 Beach Street. So that's the first thing I'd like done, is to make sure that these roofs can handle the additional weight that would be also increased by a severe winter storm, so. And then the next one was 16-211, relative to the Community Preservation Act. Counselor Rotundo has agreed to withdraw that, and the next one was 16-213, relative to the taking of eminent domain on 24-26 Furness Street. I spoke with Mayor Rigo's office today at length, and I'm told that a, an audit was issued from the Chelsea District Court to go in there and inspect it. There's no one living now with, maybe the exception of a squirrel, and that, I'm also assured that that building will be put out to bid in the very near future, with a couple of months probably. But there is nobody living in there now. That, the mayor's team has abated that situation fully, and the next item is 16-263, motion by Counselor Rotundo that the state auditor perform an audit of CDM for all conducted work within the city, and the council voted favorably on that also. So what I'd like to do is, if you want, we can take these all up, one roll call vote to cover all of them, if that's agreeable to the chair, and...
I think that's a great idea, Counselor Powers, seeing as all the members here were present during the subcommittee meeting, so one vote to take up the entire report. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna is absent. Counselor Morabito is absent. Counselor Nowoselski is absent. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Genino?
Yes.
Yes. The report has been accepted. Calendar item number six, communication from the election commissioner relative to the warrant calling for a special municipal election on Tuesday, October 18.
Madam President?
Counselor Rotundo?
Point of personal privilege?
Chief of point, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. As we are going to move forward with this election, if we could send a letter of request to the parties seeking the election, that they pay for it, as had been asked by Counselor Keith, in a measure of good faith, I have been speaking to them off and on, and I'm hoping that they would acquiesce and do that. For $76,000, if they're willing to do it, I'm happy to take the money and help out the people of our community. So before we vote on that, if we could send a letter through the clerk to Mr. McCain and his group, I'd greatly appreciate that.
Counselor Powers?
Yes, I would hope so. I spoke to Mr. McCain on several occasions and asked him if, why they wouldn't wait until there was a license on the table. There is none right now. Governor Baker could walk in here now with every city council and the state delegation, say, "We want to build a slot parlor," and it would never happen, because there's nothing on the table. So my conversation with the individual from the, who was proposing the slot parlor, was wait. We're going to take, first of all, it's going to be a statewide vote in November, and you might get a good indication from that when you look at the Revere vote in the statewide balloting, the portion of Revere that, do they want this? They don't want it. And for some reason, they kept talking about the $3 to $5 million the city was going to get in revenue, which I question that, but they tell you $3 to $5 million on one hand, and the other hand, is going in your pocket, taking out $50,000 to $70,000, the expense of the election. So I don't think they were good neighbors or good friends to the city of Revere. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. I think this is a great, and I actually'd like to put this in as a motion, if we could, Counselor Rotundo, is, as the economic development representative from the city council, I have met numerous times with the parties involved, and I've been very fair and impartial. I don't think anyone can question that. I've kept my personal opinions aside, and have met with them almost each request since early spring, and I've been, like I said, very fair. I think it would be a very good gesture for this group to offer to cover the fees for our special election, and that would be a good show of faith if they really did want to be a good community partner. So I think this would be a good idea, as the person that, one of the people, one of the councils, and I know other councils have met with them, and to set differences aside with any other issues they may have, and offer this in a show of good faith would be very nice.
Thank you, Counselor. If I'm not mistaken, Counselor Rotundo, is that an oral motion that you have on the floor? Sure. Madam Clerk, on Counselor Rotundo's motion?
That the city clerk on behalf of the city council send a letter to Mr. McCain requesting to pay for the special election on October 18. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna is absent. Counselor Morabito is absent. Counselor Nowoselski is absent. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Genino?
Yes.
Yes. The motion is ordered.
And the communication will be placed on file.
Calendar item number seven, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor, city solicitor, and building inspector appear before the city council to discuss or create a process in which homeowners who have been taxed as a two-family can petition the city to gain occupancy for a legal two-family.
Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you, Madam President. I have received several complaints from people in the Point of Pines, as well as in the Ward 6 area, that they have been having trouble and in fact had their kitchens removed. I know in the past, Tom Ambrosino had set up a process in which people could petition the city in order to turn that in-law apartment into a legal second, a two-family by obtaining an occupancy. There are some properties, unfortunately, that are being taxed as a two-family and are not a legal two-family under the law in the sense of occupancy, and I'd like to see if we could help people who could probably use that relief. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rotundo. Are there any of the counselors that wish to speak on this? I think it's a great motion. On Counselor Rotundo's motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Counselor Haas that a certificate of appreciation be awarded to Pamela M. Anderson for her extensive volunteerism and in-depth community involvement serving the residents of Revere and surrounding communities.
Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Madam President. Pamela has been very involved with community activities. She's unbelievable as far as a worker. I'd like to pass this motion in a time of the presentation. I have a lot to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Are there any of the counselors that wish to speak on this? On Counselor Haas's motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Madam President?
Counselor Rotundo?
Point of order, I'm just wondering if we had went forward by certifying the city warrant for the special election? Had we...
It's a communication, so the communication was placed on file.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. I did, right after we took up your oral motion.
You placed it on file. Does that mean it's certified?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Late motion presented by counselors Keith and Patch that the mayor requests the appropriate department to install additional security cameras at the Revere baseball complex and Harry Delarousse Stadium.
So we'll start with Counselor Keith, then Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we all read the newspaper this last week, and it happened to be at the new ballfields at St. Mary's, also called Griswold Fields, I believe now. There was, there happened to be some illegal activity happening on the field or in the dugout areas, which even before this new field, there was happenings in the old dugout areas. We used to actually, people were living in the dugouts at one point in time, and we used to remove their stuff every morning. But on top of the activities that are happening at the new ballfields, there's also some dumping that's been happening in the back of the fields. I talked to some of the maintenance crew in the morning, and there's an older gentleman that works for the senior works program down there, and he had alluded to me that he's sent people away numerous times at 8:00 or 9:00 in the morning trying to take their truck and push debris off the back of it in the back fields. And then, of course, this weekend, spending some time down in the Harry Delarousse Stadium, which is locked up almost every night, the, there was graffiti all over the bathrooms, on the doors, a lot of tagging, and there was also some graffiti on the Hill School just recently. The Hill School has a camera system, and they were able to identify exactly who the person was that put the graffiti on the side of the building, and they were able to hold that person accountable. I think that the large stadium with the amount of activities that are happening there, we should be able to find the money in, within our means, with the modern-day technology to have good camera systems down at both stadiums, the stadium and the field, because they're really great assets of our city, and I would hate to see them deteriorate rapidly because of activities that are happening when people aren't around to watch.
Great motion, Counselor. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, we have two beautiful facilities with the stadium and the Revere baseball complex, the Griswold. I've been, you don't know how many phone calls I've gotten over the name change that I want you to know that the, I don't believe it had anything, it has nothing to do with the council, it has nothing to do with, I don't believe the mayor's office, so I, I believe that was the original name of the place, but I don't know that for a fact, but again, we had nothing, we had nothing to do with that. And as far as the cameras, I think it's necessary to get them, because, you know, not only, not to have the damage done, but we've had a couple of overdoses down there also, and for the public safety reason, I think the cameras are necessary. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you, Madam President, and I'm sure Counselor Zambudo's and others can affirm, we need to put cameras in every single facility that we have in the city. I said this before and was rebuffed by the administration, and we've had now several overdoses in city parks. I was rebuffed regarding Sunny Meyer's Park, in which I wanted to put cameras there in lieu of directed patrols. The issue is you cannot have a directed patrol if you don't know what time the people are going there. The cameras act as an added sense of security, whether it be, God forbid, someone snatched a kid, God forbid, someone tries to steal the medal, or for that matter, do any malfeasance to the property there. But it also alerts the police as to when people unfortunately are shooting up, and to put directed patrols there. The other part is, having that can save a life, and I know there was recently that they had caught on one camera where they had found someone shooting up, and it did save their life, and it wasn't in this community, it was in another community. So I can't see why we can't have it at every single park in this city. It's a, it's a, it's a low-ball figure, and to save one life, it's worth all the cameras. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other counselors that wish to speak on this? Counselor Zambudo?
I absolutely support this motion. I believe it's absolutely necessary, and I'm sure there's plenty of grants out there. The police department are always getting grants for cameras. I'm sure if someone researches it, it's, it probably won't cost us anything, and it'll protect these valuable assets. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zambudo. Thank you, Counselor Zambudo. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Late communication from the election commissioner relative to the warrant for the state election on November 8th, 2016.
This will be placed on file? Before we adjourn this evening, we have several just points of information. Councilor McKenna and Councilor Morabito regret that they were unable to attend tonight. Unfortunately, they both had delayed flights and were very disappointed that they couldn't make this evening's meeting. And a second point of information, I know many counselors share my sentiment, so on behalf of the entire city council, we want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, a Happy Jewish New Year, and a Happy Rosh Hashanah. The city council will be adjourned until October 24th. Thank you.